Gentlemen, thank you for coming to our meeting. Before a meeting begins, we have the invocation offered by Commissioner Lockhart, followed by the Fudge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Lord, for bringing us all back together again this year in 2019. I ask you to bless everyone in this room and bless the people in the city and help us all move forward together and do the right thing by everyone. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Mr. Cresser, would you call the board, please?
Mr. Waddington.
Here.
Mr. Lockhart.
Here.
And Murray.
Yes.
And Murray.
Here.
Ms. Lloyd.
Here.
Ms. Twine.
Here.
Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of December 21, 2018. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Waddington. I move that we accept the minutes of December 21st meeting and dispense with formal reading.
Second.
Then a motion, second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We turn now to audience participation, but before we begin that, I want to wish everyone here and at home a Happy New Year. We're off to another great year, I hope, for the city of Sandusky, and as always, we look forward to the work ahead and the partnership with the staff and the community. So, anyone wishing to address any of our regular agenda items?
Catherine Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. At the last meeting, it was stated commissioners cannot bid on jobs for the city according to the city charter. Open bidding doesn't make any difference. Other bidders could be relatives, other commissioners, or relatives of the commissioners, or anyone else who has their hand in running the city in some way. Keep it in the family or keep the bid low for a favor later. This seems to be a safeguard in the city to keep corruption out. We just saw on television yesterday about the corruption in L.A. City Council, and it's a mess. It seems pretty straightforward. It doesn't need an explanation from the city lawyer. I don't know Mr. Brady personally, but he seems to be an upstanding person, and he's running -- he seems to have a reputable business. But he is a commissioner. His bid should never have been submitted or accepted. If this situation had happened and overlooked in the past, it shouldn't have, and if it doesn't -- but it doesn't give a pass to let it happen again. These signs won't be needed for a while. Why not reopen the bidding and see if you can attract more companies to submit bids? And Mr. Brady would be safe from controversy. And it was interesting, Commissioner Lloyd stated that the vote should proceed and they can clean up the city charter later. To Mr. Murray, how and why exactly would you clean up a charter that's been working for this long? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. We will address your concerns in the course of the meeting. Anyone else? If not, then we have a presentation. Debbie Eversole is here to give us the 2018 year in review and the 2019 Housing Development and Beautification Program, a sneak peek at what is happening next. And Ms. Eversole is our housing development specialist, and welcome to our meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Commission President and members of the commission. Tonight's presentation will review the 2018 Housing Development and Beautification Program grant funding, as well as show comparisons to the previous years in review and introduce new incentives for the program year 2019. As in the previous years, the 2018 program provided grant funding for property owners to make exterior home repairs or substantial redevelopment to their properties. Additionally, the program provided assistance to purchase a new home within the city of Sandusky. In 2018, the program was funded $300,000, with added carryover funding of $59,569 from the program year 2017. The carryover funding came as a result of rescinded funds that were committed for projects that were not completed within the guideline requirements. The program also started with $528,924,000 in funds designated exclusively to the six Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative areas, also known as the Model Block areas. Approximately $71,000 of this initial 600 was funded in '17 to come up with the $528,000. During the program year, there were a total of 242 approved applications consisting of 21 substantial redevelopment projects, 161 exterior repair projects, of which 36 added landscaping onto their projects, and 60 applicants received down payment assistance. So our GIS analyst Tiffany Taylor mapped the 242 parcels to show the locations of the funded projects. Any project within the different colored areas was funded with the Model Block funds. Starting with the left of the screen, the blue area is considered our West Side Neighborhood District. The yellow is designated as a South Side Neighborhood District. Green area is the Garden District. The pink area is south of Kilborn. Purple is the first through fifth street district, and the orange portion is the Cove District. Any other funding sources was the citywide $300,000 funding. Over $717,000 was committed towards the projects for the year. Of this, $339,000 was committed to repairs, improvements, and development. Project costs for repairs, improvement, and development exceeded $2.5 million, leveraging private dollars 3.7x. The down payment assistance portion awarded almost $178,000 for buyers to come into the city. To highlight comparisons from 2016 to now, the number of approved applications has increased two and a -- about two and a half times. Some of the reasons are the obvious, additional funding sources, but also spreading the word through neighborhood meetings coordinated by commissioners and staff, placing signs at completed projects, information on the city website and social media, along with speaking with contractors directly, mortgage lenders, and real estate agents, making them aware of our programs. There were 21 substantial redevelopment projects awarded, increasing from 10 in 2017 and 2 in 2016. The 161 approved applications for exterior repair increased from 97 in '17 and 60 in 2016. There were 36 landscaping projects, which are now add-on options to the exterior repair program, and 60 down payment assistance grants were awarded, up from 51 in '17 and 30 in 2016. So of the 60 homes that were purchased in the city, 52 were first-time homebuyers for 87% of the applications. 27 were previously vacant homes, that equals out to 45% of the applications, and 24 buyers moved into the city for about 40% of the approved applications. The average price, purchase price, was $86,000. And to show comparisons for the down payment assistance since the beginning of the program, 60 homes were purchased compared to 51 in '17 and 30 in 2016. The number of first-time homebuyers is always the large percentage of the applicants, but not a requirement. 52 of the approved applications were first-time homebuyers for 87% of the applications, compared to 45 in 2017 at 88%, and 27 of the applications in 2016 for 90% of the applications. Previously vacant homes, 27 this year, about 45%, compared to 23 in 2017 at about 45%, and 11 in 2016 at about 37%. 24 applications, or 40%, moved into the city in 2018, compared to 22 in 2017 at 43%, 8 in 2016 at about 26%. The average purchase price has stayed the same at around $86,000. So one of the direct goals of the program is to eliminate code violations. In 2018, the program assisted applicants in correcting 27 code violations. Tiffany has also mapped these locations out, but of these seven dots that are on the screen there, seven of them are scheduled to be complete in early 2019. We went ahead with the numbers because we don't anticipate these projects to go incomplete. As they know, they won't be awarded the funding if it goes incomplete, and they will also be assessed administrative penalties for the code violation if the violations are not corrected. So an example of one of these corrected violations is at 308 East Adams Street. We helped them with funding for painting of the house. It was currently cited for peeling paint on the exterior, so that violation was removed. They were not assessed any penalties, and we also helped them fund that project. Three homes obtained assistance for lead abatement. These homes were eligible through the Erie County Department's Healthy Homes Program. The funding that we gave them, though, was to their financial responsibility only. So they were still required to pay a portion of that grant through the Erie County Healthy Homes, and we helped them with their financial, you know, requirement. The program assisted in repair of safety concerns. It's not a very large picture, but you can -- you might be able to see that on the left-hand side, the home was -- the porch was being braced up, or the roof of the porch was being braced. So this was at 915 Polk Street, and we helped them repair the porch and refinish the steps or redo the steps as well. The city also assisted with three newly constructed homes. The one pictured is the Firelands Habitat for Humanity Home. This one is located at 2204 Wilbert Street. There are two others still under construction that will be complete in 2019. Here, the applicant at 2514 Mylan Road, he put on a 22-by-12 family room addition. You can see that he kind of just added to his garage there and enclosed that. His total cost for the project was $23,800, and we provided $5,000 of that through our substantial redevelopment program. The next slides, this one is just a siding and landscape, but it made a major difference to that neighborhood on Harrison Street. We have a porch and landscape. They removed a lot of the dead area on the left there on Shelby Street and repaired that porch and added landscape. This one was a driveway repair on Heritage Drive. The cracked driveway was completely poured new. And then we have a sidewalk and driveway repair on Wayne Street that made a nice difference there. So some exciting new things planned for the year. We're ready to roll out the 2019 Housing Development and Beautification Guidelines and Application. We plan to do this within this coming week. We plan to announce the availability on the city website through social media and sharing. We're set to notify 85 people on a waiting list, and we are going to attend a workshop hosted by our compliance office that's landlord and tenant-based. And we are also going to plan a real estate workshop later in the spring to notify some realtors of the program. So secondly, the statewide -- or the citywide tax abatement is in full effect. Due to the expansion of the former downtown community reinvestment area, we were fortunate enough to have the ability to offer our residents a 10-year, 75% tax abatement on new construction or the improved value of a home due to restoration. Third, we plan to strategize ways for employers to offer these incentives to their current employees to relocate. This may bring in some additional funding, hopefully, and we can just keep growing the program. And last, Director Klein and the Public Works Department are ready to introduce a new grant program called the Utilities Health and Safety Program. This program will provide grant assistance to residents to repair or replace the water or sewer lines on their portion of the property, their side of the property. Briefly, the Utilities Health and Safety Program is designed to aid and repair or replace private water service lines or sewer laterals that pose a health and safety risk to the property owners, tenants, or to the general public. The program has very similar standards as the current Housing Development and Beautification Program. So the program will offer assistance to utilities work in the amount of 50% of the eligible project cost per property. Each category of the program will be funded $100,000, and the maximum grant awarded for sewer line projects will be $8,000, and the maximum grant awarded for water line projects will be $6,000. If it's determined that both water and sewer lines need to be replaced or repaired, a maximum of $12,000 may be awarded to eligible applicants. So standard eligibility for the program includes full replacement of lead water service lines, repair or replacement of sewer laterals with significant defects that will cause large amounts of infiltration or exfiltration, and repair or replacement of sewer laterals in poor condition or with obstruction. So there's also emergency situations, which may include full replacement of leaking water lines resulting in no or low water pressure, to the point of no water or high utility bills, repair or replacement of sewer lateral causing a safety concern such as a sinkhole in the right-of-way or the street, or a total collapse of sewer lateral resulting in sewage backup in the residence. Administration of the grant programs will be through the Community Development Department. Anyone interested in the programs may contact myself. Ariel Blenka is the Community Development Manager, or Matt Lasco, Chief Development Officer. This information will be on the website as well. And thank you for allowing me time to review this year's program and introduce the new Utilities Program to you. I can answer any questions or take any comments. If it's anything regarding the Utilities Program, though, they may be better answered by Director Klein. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eversole. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased to see this improvement, and I think driving around our community, it's more noticeable. I'm glad, I guess it appears that we're finally doing our thing in shallow water the last couple of years, so it's really noticeable out in the community.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Lockhart.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Commissioner Waddington's thoughts. Now that we have Ms. Eversole on full time, I think it's even more seamless, the transition for coming in and getting the grants and understanding that. So, Mr. Lasco and your team, excellent job over the last three years of improvements.
Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
This probably through to the staff, the -- can we get documentation for -- do you have pictures of all these houses we're taking?
We have before and after pictures of all of them.
Okay, fine. The afters are fine. I think it would be in our interest within, say, every three years, that we go back and review what those look like.
Certainly.
So the 2016s, this spring, getting a picture to see what they do, that's really one way to evaluate the -- how well the program is actually working. You need to see what -- what these place is doing now.
Okay.
And then I would like to hear about the utility grant concept, whoever has that information. It's the first I heard of it, so.
Mr. Klein? I know you've been working toward that for a while. I think it's been mentioned here before, but maybe not at the Commission meeting.
Yeah, this is through you, Mr. President. This is something that we've wanted to do for a while, but we haven't been able to necessarily find the time to get everything in order and everything in line. What the goal is, there's several aspects to it. Not only does it benefit the resident, but it also benefits the city. If you look at it on the sewer side of things, if there's a sinkhole under the road and the resident's responsible for it, they not only have to fix their sewer lateral, but they also have to fix the road. If it's under the sidewalk, same thing. It could be a pretty costly repair that that resident doesn't have. So what we would be doing is we would be basically paying for half of that, but on the city's side of it, not only does it improve the safety, but it also helps in the fact that we're not getting all that eye and eye, all that inflow and infiltration into the sewer system, meaning that we're not sending it down to the wastewater plant, we're not treating it, or if it's in the -- if it's going to the combined sewer, it might not be contributing to overflows. And the goal, one of the issues that municipalities deal with on a regular basis is that infiltration issue, and that's a large reason as to why we have overflows throughout the city. So on the water side of things, and we talk about the lead pipes, the lead service lines, those are significant issues. If somebody has a frozen water line in the winter and they have to have an emergency call-out, it might be $4,000 or $5,000. Sometimes those things are under driveways, and we end up, you know, in certain times we have to respond in the middle of the night, those types of things. So there's mutual benefit here, and it's just a good way of, you know, increasing a program that has already been very successful and very positive and trying to add another component for the residents that these repairs could be pretty massive repairs in some situations if you have to tear up a driveway and a road to make a repair, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Klein. Poole, let Andrew answer your questions.
Just as you -- when you bring it to us forward, the -- obviously, where we're coming up with the money to pay for it is one thing important. I think we have like 15,000 homes in Sandusky. That's a lot of $100,000 taking care of their things. Also, would you just investigate how the utility company program, which I think it costs $1.50 a month or something like that, that every resident is entitled to simply pay, that covers the -- from the street to the house? It's just, I'm not sure you folks have done the research, but they have a program, it's not very -- it's inexpensive, that you can buy insurance straight through the utilities that can relieve us of a lot of, what looks like a lot of cost.
So you're asking about the electrical program, I think, right?
I think they have one for the water also.
I don't believe that to be correct. I think it's for the electrical program, and I've always regarded that as a scam.
Maybe they're in a good mood, but they replaced my water line. I'm afraid I didn't pay a dime, so.
I don't know.
Maybe they don't do it anymore.
Well, maybe it's a different program.
If you would just check on it and see, and we'll blend our, you know, blend this in with whatever they're talking about if we actually can afford it. Thank you.
I guess I saw it as a bit of a -- kind of a stuff. We're all collectively, it's like a collective insurance program, we're kind of collectively insuring against any of us. It's not likely that any of us, particularly one of us, would have this, but if it happened, it's a way to ameliorate the cost, and it's just, I think it's a good kind of insurance product, so happy to see it happen, so. Additional questions or comments regarding the program?
I'm sorry, that was my gas line. It wasn't.
Your gas?
It was my gas line.
Okay. All right. Yeah, and I've seen that, that's where they offer an IGS and electric. That's right.
Still check on it. That's a lot of money, though.
I think that's a scam, but I'm glad it worked out. I'm glad it worked out for you. So I just want to say thank you, because these are really great numbers that we're putting on the board. To see that increase, consistent increase, year over year, and to see that it's being accepted more broadly in the community, I just really think it's great. And just a personal plug, I spent so much time as a kid at 308 East Adams, as did my father, because that's where he grew up, and I was saddened to see the home fall in disrepair. And I went by, I don't know, sometime this summer, I guess it was, when it was fixed up, and I loved it. It was just great to see. I didn't know the backstory, so that was a nice personal story, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, we have a number of communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Would someone care to make a motion to accept those?
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We turn next to the consent agenda items, but first, commissioners, are there any items that you would like to have placed on the regular agenda? Ms. Cresser, would you then present the consent agenda items, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A is authorization to file a grant application with the Ohio Attorney General for the purchase of body armor for the police department. Item B, authorization to enter into an agreement with Great White North for the 2019 Dragons and Bacon Festival. Item C is a change in funding source for the CDVG fiscal year 2017 demolition project. And item D is the transfer of C1 and C2 liquor permits for BK, DA, and TA LLC, doing business as Sandusky Food and Wine, located at 303 Beatty Avenue.
Thank you, Ms. Cresser. Commissioners, having heard the consent agenda items, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move that we accept the consent agenda and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions A through D as drafted and presented to the city commission under this consent agenda take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions A through D, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or 14 of the city charter.
Then a motion and second discussion. I get hungry when they talk about that bacon and dragons piece, but could you, Ms. Cresser, please pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolution, please.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Those ordinances, that resolution, and that motion are all adopted and were passed. Ms. Cresser, would you present item number one, please?
Yes, item one is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Free Sign Company of Sandusky, Ohio, for the City Hall signage and wayfinding project, interior signage, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter. This is the second reading.
Okay. Ms. Cresser, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Was this -- this was withdrawn, correct?
This, so here's the situation as I understand it from Mr. Heiburger. I think that -- am I permitted to speak at this point in time, or do we have something in motion?
Will let you speak.
Let me speak, okay. So here's, here's as I understand it. So Mr. Brady has indicated that he doesn't want this controversy, that he bid this low, a lowest cost as a matter of pride, because it's our city hall after all. He doesn't want to cause the controversy, so he said, "That's fine. I'll just, you know, vote it down, or I'll withdraw it," or whatever you think is the right procedure, and we can proceed in that way. And my understanding is that we would vote this down, and then we would award the contract to the second lowest bidder. So have I stated that accurately, Mr. Heiburger?
Yes, Mr. President. That's correct.
Okay. So with that, Mr. Waddington, I think we need to --
So we're just no vote on one, and then?
Right. I think that's what we --
Okay. Because I saw it was withdrawn, and then?
So I still need a motion to adopt so that we can vote it down. I know it doesn't make any sense, but that's what we need. Can we pass it on first reading? So what I would request is a motion to pass the item number one on the second reading, understanding that we may very well vote it down.
Mr. Chairman, why can't we just?
No motion.
Yeah.
Just have no motion and let it die as it is?
Yeah.
Mr. Heiburger?
I think it'd be clearer just to have the motion, and that way we fully -- right now we have a motion that's already been approved once. I think it's cleaner to make the motion to enter into the agreement and then vote no.
Chairman, regardless, I'm going to make the motion. I make a motion that we, on second reading, this -- that we approve this on second, that we approve item one on second reading.
Has been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion and second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
If it's withdrawn, why do we need to? And we vote no, that means we're voting no on the withdrawal.
No. No, my understanding from Mr. Heiburger is that we are simply voting it down, and that is, has been explained, as he did just now, the cleanest way to deal with it. I would have thought we could just leave it there, never voted on second, vote on it second reading, but he has recommended that, as both of you are suggesting, but he's recommending that to make a cleaner record, we actually vote it down and move on to the other bid.
But if he's withdrawing his bid, there's nothing to vote on.
Mr. Heiburger?
Through Commission President, look, the problem that we're having is, I think the cleanest version is what I've stated. Obviously, Mr. Brady can withdraw his bid, and he's done so, and through some of our provisions in our contract, it allows him to do that. Again, it's much more clear if we do it this way and vote no.
I will say, Ms. Twine, that I don't really care what procedure we adopt. I'm simply acting upon the law director's recommendation. Does somebody add, Mr. Heiburger? Otherwise, Mr. Poole.
I mean, it has been brought, I mean, understand that there's a bid before us that's been arguably withdrawn. There's an ability for the commission to actually contest that withdrawal, so that's
Mr. Chairman, that's my point, it's like, we need to do this, because appropriately, I do not believe he can withdraw the bid. I think it's inappropriate for, I should say, he has, it's complicated, he can withdraw the bid, just as he was allowed to make the bid. At this juncture, because it's gone as far as it has, it is inappropriate for us to allow him to withdraw the bid. The reason the bidding process exists is to ensure that the citizens get the lowest and best bid. Had he withdrawn the bid before we opened the bids, and for everyone to see what the bids were, or perhaps, and even later, we voted to accept the bid, it might have been okay, but we voted to accept this. At this point, this vendor owes us to fulfill the contract when we finish voting. So, letting him leave now opens up the system to question, number one, if, if, if one bidder is allowed at this juncture to withdraw his bid, then the only remaining bidder also should be able to withdraw his bid without explanation. And then we're stuck rebidding, and since we now already know, have exposed, that what should have been done for ten thousand dollars, the twenty thousand dollar bid can be moved up to thirty. We can't put ourselves in that position. Now, I don't, if, if you would like to, if, and also, this is a written process, written bids, we approved it, we're moving down the line, if any bidder would like to get out, we should get it in writing, we should debate it on its pros and cons, and approve or disapprove the withdrawal. And then you move to the next question about what bids are left. Do we take the next bid, or do we recognize that the difference between the bids is so large, that perhaps we should go back and rebid? We're just switching off and taking a nine thousand dollar loss, because one bidder decided to leave, and the winning bid decided to leave, whatever their reasons are perfectly acceptable as a businessman. I understand, as a businessman, that trying business make money, and if after the bids are open, you find out that your bid was significantly less, and you left a lot of money on the table, and you bid very low, and are not going to make much money, it's a business decision to say, you know, maybe I ought to get out of this, because I can take another bid for something else and make more money. I'm not suggesting, hang on a second, I'm talking about what our situation is. We should sit, we should not allow this.
Are you suggesting, Mr. Brady is withdrawing his bid, because, I mean, he told us before.
I'm suggesting that the situation is, without Mr. Brady or not, bidders at this juncture should not be able to walk away, because we will be left with that as our precedent. It's nothing to do with him, I'm sorry, it's him.
Are you agreeing with Mr. Heiburger, we should vote this down?
You guys get to vote the way you want, I'm not sure, be honest with you, we're resp, I, I'm not, I, I wish you'd just not tried all these different angles.
Oh, wait a minute.
This is starting, and I will.
What are you advocating for? I don't understand.
Yeah, I know you don't understand. Mr. Heiburger, would you explain, would you explain to us what the original issue was with the charter? Did you go through that?
We don't need to go through that.
Yeah, we do need to go through that, because that's what we're talking about.
Skip that, Mr. Heiburger, we went through it at the last meeting, I don't want to go through that again.
You may not want to go through that again, but it's part of this, it's part of the process.
I have the right to tell them whether to answer that question or not, and I'm telling them.
Based on what?
We've gone through it before, and we've got it.
Based on what? We have not gone through before.
Based upon the fact that I chaired the meeting. Does anybody else have any comments on this legislation?
Yes, I'll make one comment.
No, you're finished.
No, I'm not finished, I get five minutes twice.
Then wrap it up.
Wrap it up. I suggest submit, and did not wish to do this, that the reason given by the chairman is inaccurate and inappropriate. This is a cover-up of the fact that, Mr., that we are not allowed to give a contract to a member of this commission, and rather than just saying that we made a mistake and voting it down, you come up with this discussion about, oh, I bid it under my, underbid it, and I, and I think we should, I don't want to create a problem, and that's what all of this is about, and that's what I object to. You shouldn't have done that. I would, I would have voted this away just fine. You folks are not honest, okay? Simple as that. He never should have been allowed to bid, he should have been told before he bid that it was inappropriate.
Mr. Chairman.
He did, the staff allowed it and tried to slide it through, it came up last meeting, because, and, and now we have an issue, and now we're trying, trying to get by, like, well, it was just.
Mr. Chairman.
There you go, now I've said my piece, I didn't want to have to go through.
Ms. Lloyd.
I can tell you that absolutely nothing has been, they're not trying to slide one through, absolutely not. Before Mr. Heiburger was asked about any type of legislation like this, a previous law director, I had asked for another project, if something happened to come up with a public relations or a marketing project, would one of my businesses be able to competitively bid, knowing that I'm on the city commission? I was told and advised, and maybe this is just a problem with us interpreting our charter, that if it was a competitively bid process, and my company's bid came in the lowest, that I would or could be awarded the job. So, and that is, and this was not Mr. Heiburger, so, it is not him that is in the hot seat, someone else could be, or whoever decided to try and interpret the, the charter. So, this was not being tried to be slipped in, this is just following what everything, everyone has done for the past years. If the new interpretation is the fact that Mr. Brady should not have put a bid in, then that's all news to me, so this is why I was comfortable voting through last time, and I would still be comfortable if he, if Mr. Brady didn't want to withdraw, because when we're trying to keep our dollars in our community, and we're trying to award jobs to local businesses, then I don't, where is, where is this other sign company coming from? So, we're giving dollars, they may be in Ohio, but they're not in our community, and we're spending an extra nine thousand dollars, because our charter's being interpreted this way, and this is a complete mess, and it should not have been. So, I have no idea what you want to do with the first piece here, item number one, and then moving into item number two. I, I truly think that whatever Commissioner Brady is most comfortable with, is what we should probably do. I'm very sad, I was very sad to see the agenda get sent to me. The first thing I did was make a phone call, because this is not where a dollar should be going, and if someone chooses, as a business owner, to make a little less profit to help our community, I see no reason why not to allow them to be able to do that, as long as they are kept to the highest standards, and as Mr. Lasko had talked about a few weeks ago, all of those standards would have to be met. What the job was bid, everything that they agreed to, would have to be the same as any other sign company that came in, so, we're, I want to make sure that everyone understands that Mr. Brady, Commissioner Brady did nothing wrong in his bid that he put in, and I'm sorry that there's confusion, but obviously, we have some legislation to maybe reword, to make it absolutely clear that it is okay for a commissioner to bid a project, because we aren't going to be commissioners forever, and we have a lot of small businesses opening up, and that's what we are attracting to our community, and we want small business owners to be on the commission. So, it is very helpful for small business owners to be on the commission, so we want to make sure that we are not deterring them from running. So, I don't know what anyone's advisement is to finish this item out for this evening, but I'm open.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I make a motion, you take your roll call.
Are you, are you calling the question? I think you're calling the question. There's a motion to call the question, is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Mr. Chairman, just to, just to briefly touch on it, last meeting, I asked for clarification, and I think the staff told me they'd come back with clarification on it. This week, just to, you know, I mean, there's nothing wrong, and let me just say this, small business is one of the greatest things that we have in the country, and if, if it's possible, then it's possible for Mr. Brady to have a contract, so be it. So, I guess we're looking at formality, rule, law, any appearance of it, I assume. And so, last week, you said that you'd have some clarity on whatever this is, so if you do, that'd be great to add in right now, that way we'd have a genuine legal perspective, if you have it, if you don't have it, we're going to move on.
Mr. Heiburger, do you have something to add to what you've said before?
Through you, Commission President, to Commissioner Lockhart, again, I believe Article forty-three of our charter states that no commissioner should have an interest in the contract, therefore, I think it would be improper for the commission to vote, to approve the contract, in which there's a, an interest by a commissioner, and that's why I think it should be voted no.
So be it. So then, at this point, you know, just to wrap up, we just vote on it, because I don't think that a second reading even calls for a motion, and it's just, it's well-known that either we're voting it up or down, and that's, that's the end of this, so far as I'm concerned, and apparently, Mr. Brady doesn't want to hear about this anymore, or anybody else, so, that's what I got to say about it.
I would say, in summary, that I think Mr. Brady has done exactly, and we're considering doing exactly, what it was that was requested, and the objection that was raised, so this is intent to address that, so. Mrs. Cresser, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes. No, I mean, no, no.
Mr. Lockhart?
No, no.
Mr. Brady?
He's abstaining.
Say that. I abstain.
Mr. Murray?
No.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Ms. Lloyd?
No.
Ms. Twine?
No.
Well, that legislation is defeated. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number two, please?
Yes, item two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Adams Signs of Massillon, Ohio, for the City Hall signage and wayfinding project, interior signage, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
With the discrepancy, discrepancy in the differences between these bids of almost fifty percent, I'm not comfortable that the bid is acceptable, at twenty thousand dollars, it's nine thousand more than what else is bid. I think we're possibly, possibly overpaying for this, and I think we should rebid the contract, attempt to get additional bidders. We know it's worth ten thousand dollars, paying twenty out of hand just because it's convenient doesn't make sense to me.
Well, we don't know that it's worth ten thousand dollars, I agree, disagree with that, Mr. Brady bid it low, lowest cost is a matter of honor, we've been through that.
No, he said that.
And, and Mr. Heiburger, though, would you, would you explain to the commission whether we are in a position to reject the bids without legal liability, or just exactly what is our situation?
I don't think you could reject it, through you, Commission President, I don't think you can reject it at this point, you can always vote no, however, I don't know what the grounds would be, we have two bidders, one bid we voted no on, and now we have a second bid, I think we'd be subject to some liability if we said no to the second bidder as well, because there's nothing of substance to disqualify them.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
I mean, it would be my understanding that the commission would need to approve anything above ten thousand, so, prior to that, our, our approval, there shouldn't be anything committed, I would say.
I'm not sure, I'm.
I mean, how could we be committed, the city be committed to anything if we haven't approved it yet?
Well, as I understand from Mr. Heiburger, if we go out to request bids, and there is a, a bid that is qualified, and is, and remains, that we are obligated to award that bid, that's part of the bidding process, and we're not free to reject it without a reason, without liability for the profits that that bidder would have made on that particular job, that's what I'm understanding. Correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Mr., I talked to Mr. Heiburger before, he is correct, we're stuck, when we didn't apply this reasoning to the first bid, the lowest bid, we lose our ability to apply to the second.
Additional questions or comments?
All right.
Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on a motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Now you can say yes.
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Now you can say yes. Good job. Abstain.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Abstain.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance was adopted. Item number three, please.
Item three is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed phase two demolition of the former Wisteria Farms project, and declaring, or, sorry, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. Mr. Lasko, could you take a moment to bring us up to date on where we are in this longstanding blight to the city, and what we can look forward to with this project?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the commission, so this is hopefully the second and last phase of what was always intended to be a complete demolition and greening of the former Wisteria Hills site, which, again, is about a two-acre site, right at Campbell Street and Bold Street. We had undertook a first phase back in two thousand and seventeen, merely to clean up the above-ground issues, that being some garage structure, some abandoned vehicles, and some asbestos-containing brick piles that had co-mingled asbestos-containing materials within those brick piles. Since then, we've experienced several delays as we've continued to do our due diligence, not only was that site slightly used for a period of time for staging for the Campbell Street project, but it was probably good that it was used for that, because we had a lot of environmental due diligence to do, namely, we had to update our phase one environmental report, because it had become dated, but secondarily, the results of that indicated that we needed to look for some orphaned underground storage tanks, which fortunately do not exist. We also needed to retest the basements of the existing buildings, to make sure that there's not asbestos-containing materials in those basements. And thirdly, we needed to delineate a portion of the site, about ten square feet, that contains PCBs above residential development standards, so we needed to delineate the size of that area. So, with that said, we've completed all of our reports, we're in finalization stages of completing our demolition specification, so now we're looking to go forward with that second phase of the demolition, to fully bring the site back to green space for that neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Do we have an estimate on the cost, or we're just going to see what the bids are as they come in?
Yeah, through you, Mr. President, on all of our commercial industrial projects, we've not done contractors' cost estimates, we normally don't do those on demolition projects. Fortunately, the first phase demolition, which included significant amounts of demolition and asbestos-containing materials, of which all the debris that left that site had to go to certified landfill for those materials, that first phase cost a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Obviously, we have to wait to see where the bids come in, but it is my expectation that the bids will come significantly less than one hundred thousand dollars, because the materials other than that ten-square-foot site do not contain asbestos, so we'll delineate that site and pull out that soil, but everything else can go to a normal landfill.
And once we complete this project, it's anticipated that this could go back into residential use?
It, once we delineate, or, excuse me, once we would clean out the ten-square-feet of soil, it is developable to a residential standard, so what that could mean is if the neighbors wanted to, and was in their interest, we could divvy up the site to provide additional green space or backyards for some of those houses, which we know are very tight and don't have a lot of space. Until then, the site is currently owned by the state of Ohio, it was forfeited through state tax foreclosure, and for the time being, it will stay in the ownership of the state. Once we clean up the site, and if we determine that residents do want to have that added to their yard for additional green space, the city or the county land bank could come into an ownership position to work with the property owners to replat that space if necessary.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lasko. Questions or comments, commissioners? I, I will note, Mr. Lasko, that it's become, I don't think we have any demolition projects[1765.71] this with the public. We are running out of demolition funds. Um, and, uh, we have been extraordinarily successful for the last number of years, uh, based upon state, federal grants, and just a lot of, uh, hustle, I'm gonna, in a really good way, uh, in finding those funds. But we're running out of sources. Um, the state isn't contributing additional dollars. Uh, it doesn't look like the federal government's gonna be additional, contributing additional dollars. And we're going to need to develop, um, a funding source for our, our, um, land bank program. Um, otherwise, we're gonna be out of business here pretty soon. So I, it's a grave concern.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, to, to speak to your point, I saw the same results from the state. All over the state, we're kinda, everybody's sort of drying up on their, um, demolition funds. And it seems to be that the trend, and maybe we can get more into this, because we're kinda in that area already, is to do more rehabilitation than demolition, which could participate in re-invigorating our neighborhoods and improving the values there too, versus just demolition, because we're gonna have to be more creative. So if, potentially, that we can partner up with someone like Habitat for Humanity versus doing complete rebuilds, they can do rehabs, or other partners in the neighborhood, but can we, um, get together and maybe do a little survey or something with the staff on doing rehabilitation, uh, versus demolition in some of our neighborhoods and some of our projects? Because some of the structures, you know, it's questionable, should they be torn down? Some of them certainly should be torn down. And I know that we're doing a great job of that, but let's, I, I'd like to see us do more towards rehabilitation, uh, on that side. I don't know what you might think, or-
Well, I thought, I thought the presentation earlier was to your very point.
Right.
And, and, and that's certainly very, very important. And as we wind down, uh, the demolition needs, then, absolutely, I agree a hundred percent. Uh, but I, I don't think we're there yet. We still have, um, an inventory, I'm just guessing, uh, on the order of two hundred houses that are, um, were on the, uh, the property survey some years ago now that really had to be torn down. We're, where are we? About halfway through that process, Mr. Lasko? I'm, I'm embarrassed that I can't remember the numbers right now.
Uh, through you, Mr. President, to the members of the commission, the original Western Reserve survey had a hundred and ninety-one properties, including commercial, industrial, residential. Admittedly, as we were able to dig into that number through our code compliance and code enforcement divisions, we've added to it as well, uh, because the Western Reserve survey was not an interior inspection. Uh, at this point, uh, per our current list, we're about a hundred and twenty-five, uh, which we're tackling both through the city's CDPG annual allocation, but also the Erie County Land Bank funding. Uh, I think the, the dire need will be, as, as was mentioned, the county land bank is sitting on about a quarter million dollars, which will carry us through two thousand and nineteen. At that point, there is no other federal or state funding that has been earmarked or identified for any land bank, quite honestly. Uh, so unless it's a land bank across the state that has, uh, you know, been able to acquire some type of lucrative real estate, uh, to sustain operations, federal and state funding just do not exist. So, we're in initial discussions about trying to come up with quickly a sustainable operating source, because land banks, just from a demolition standpoint, that's really not their only use. They have much limited liability even compared to a municipality in terms of coming into an ownership position and addressing blighted property. So, keeping the health of our county land bank is of utmost importance, uh, going forward. And, and also, too, uh, the initial one point five million dollars in EMS funding we set aside through the commission's, uh, legislation a couple of years ago, we're down to about a quarter million of that, which is not committed. So, uh, sort of both wells are drying up, and probably will be fully committed at the end of two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, well, I certainly would appreciate your updating us with more information, um, in the months ahead as we look at, uh, alternative sources. Are we about halfway through the inventory of houses that need to be brought down, or, or am I off on that?
Uh, through you, Mr. President, I think it's fair to say we're halfway through. I know one twenty-five doesn't seem halfway through one ninety-one, but that's also because the one ninety-one probably shortchanged the actual number of properties in the city of Sandusky. Uh, we believe that was closer to three hundred, uh, through our code compliance division, coupled with the Western Reserve study.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm sorry, I, I diverged just a little bit from that, didn't I? Um, so, just to remind everyone, we're talking about the, uh, second phase of the demolition of the former Wisteria Farms site. Additional, um, comments or questions on that legislation? Mr. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Fine?
Yes.
And now on the resolution? Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Fine?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Fine?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number four, please.
Item number four is an ordinance declaring that certain real property owned by the city located on Venice Road, Sandusky, and identified as parcel number six zero dash zero 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 four three dot one one one, is no longer needed for any municipal purpose, and authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement to sell the designated real property to Joanne M. Helsner, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter. Second.
Then a motion in second, discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Fine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Item five is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed demolition and asbestos abatement of one 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 four Fifth Street, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion in second, discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Fine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Fine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Fine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number six, please.
Item six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with K.D. McMartin and Associates Incorporated of Nitsfield, Ohio, for contract administration and inspection services for the Columbus-Scott-Campbell Intersection Project, Phase Three, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter. Second.
Then a motion in second, discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Fine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please.
Item five is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed demolition and asbestos abatement of one 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 four Fifth Street, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion in second, discussion. Mr. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Fine?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Fine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Fine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Item number seven is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with K.D. McMartin and Associates Incorporated of Nitsfield, Ohio, for contract administration and inspection services for the Columbus-Scott-Campbell Intersection Project, Phase Three, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Managers, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter. Second.
Then a motion in second, discussion. I know this was one of the, uh, projects that was laid out as far back as the bicentennial, uh, plan, when we took a look at what we wanted to do with the layout of some of the streets and the tough intersections to get through. This is a tough one to get through. So this is the last of three phases, um, that, uh, we're, we're going through to get this done. Uh, but it, it is, uh, a much improved area. We've got a few more that we need to address in the city, and, and I know that's in the capital budget in years to come, but you'd get one of these, uh, picked off, uh, so that it's a safer area for pedestrians. Additional questions or comments? Mr. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Fine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Item number seven is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to grant an access and utility easement to Wagner Building LLC by the purpose of general access to two forty-six East Market Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter.
Managers, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section fourteen of the city charter. Second.
Then a motion in second, discussion.
I apologize, I thought I was losing my voice a little bit. Uh, I'll start with the donations this evening. A donation of forty dollars for the K-9 Fund was received from Kathleen Fetz. I'd ask for a motion to receive that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion in second, discussion. Lot of objection, motion to be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Also, the Pioneer Committee donated materials for the Freedom Shrine in Washington Park, including brick pavers, concrete, and the Martin Luther King bust. The monetary value of this donation is thirteen thousand dollars, thirty cent, thirty dollars and eighty-four cents. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation. So moved.
Second.
Then a motion in second, discussion. Lot of objection, motion to be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved, with our, our thanks for that very substantial contribution. And I know there are going to be more in your report, Mr. Woolshire, about the unveiling of that, uh, new bust.
Great. Another, uh, additional donation from Balcone Monument for the Martin Luther King bust, for the Freedom Shrine. Uh, they donated the pedestal. Uh, the monetary value of this donation is twenty-five hundred dollars. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation as well. So moved.
Second.
Then a motion in second, discussion. Lot of objection, motion to be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved, with our thanks to the Will family for their continued civic spirit.
Absolutely. Uh, moving on to new and old business, starting with the police department. The police and IT departments are finalizing a decision to purchase new body-worn cameras. The first cameras purchased were in two thousand and fifteen with a generous donation, uh, by Mel Stoffer through the Dorn Foundation. In light of the Dorn Foundation's generous, generous support of the police department in this program, we've sent a letter, uh, determining if they want to continue their funding support of this program. If they determine that they want to make a donation, acceptance of the grant dollars will appear in the legislation that will come before the commission. But we'd like to request a motion to support, oh, I'm sorry, we will send a letter, to support sending a letter to the Dorn Foundation for the potential funding of the, uh, body-worn camera project. I apologize.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Woolshire, are you asking for a motion to approve the letter?
Motion to approve, application to the Dorn Foundation. Sorry, that was a little-
Second.
Then a motion in second, discussion. Lot of objection, motion to be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to the fire department. Firefighters have continued being active in the community, including helping twice a month with Ogo's Mobile Food Pantry and Project Happy, and also assisted with Sandusky Recreation's winter break camp at Sandusky High School, which was very successful. Uh, also throughout the month of December, firefighters and explorers volunteered at Victory Kitchen as an extension of No Shave November. And on Christmas Eve, the fire department turned into Santa's Workshop with firefighters serving as Santa's elves, putting together toys. Uh, also Lieutenant Bodel and Community Impact Officer Jeff Danovich provided drone coverage for the Shine on the Shore event, which took place the week before last. Uh, for the finance department, the next scheduled finance committee meeting is Friday,
the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 1519, the collective bargaining unit for certain employees of the City of Sandusky for the period January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2021, a copy of which is attached to this ordinance, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Mister's having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Heyberger, this is the last of the three union contracts that we need to approve every three years. We've already completed in the last year the unions with our firefighter, or the agreements with our firefighters and with the police. This is with all of the other union employees that we have, all the non, I guess, all the non-administrative employees, so everyone from the street department to water and sewer and traffic and parks and all the other work that we do across the city. Anything do you care to offer? Mr. Whoopsir also? Both of you?
Through you, Commissioner President, some of the stuff is very similar to what you saw in the other two contracts. So other than that, nothing additional.
Mr. Whoopsir, Mr. Klein, anything to add? A lot of those folks work, obviously, ultimately under your direction, Mr. Klein. Anything you wish to add?
I guess if you don't mind, I would like to add one thing, is the president of the union spoke to him after the negotiations, and he expressed to me how happy many of the union members in AFSMI are with the administration, with the way the city's moving forward, with just the relationship that has been gained in the past three, four, five years, that there, there's a lot more confidence in many of the union members and what's going on. So when it went to a vote, it was pretty easily passed, so it was just good to hear, and I thought I'd pass that on to you guys as well.
Thank you. Questions or comments, commissioners? Mr. Kresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now the ordinance?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. That completes our regular items of business. Mr. Whoopsir, we turn the meeting over to you now for your report.
Thank you, Commissioner President, commissioners, audience, and staff. I apologize, I thought I was losing my voice a little bit. I'll start with the donations this evening. A donation of $40 for the K-9 Fund was received from Kathleen Fets. I'd ask for a motion to receive that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Lot of objection, the motion be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Also, the Pioneer Committee donated materials for the Freedom Shrine in Washington Park, including brick pavers, concrete, and the Martin Luther King bust. The monetary value of this donation is $13,030, $30.84. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Lot of objection, the motion be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved, and that's a very substantial contribution. We appreciate that as well. I know Balcony Monuments has been a really great partner throughout this entire project of bringing this to conclusion.
Absolutely. And then a final donation also to the benefit of Washington Park. Allison and Mike Will donated $500 from the San Marino Development Company LLC to be used to purchase holiday lights for Washington Park for next season. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Lot of objection, the motion be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved, with our thanks to the Will family for their continued civic spirit.
Absolutely. Moving on to new and old business, starting with the police department. The police and IT departments are finalizing a decision to purchase new body worn cameras. The first cameras purchased were in 2015 with a generous donation by Mel Stoffer through the Dorn Foundation. In light of the Dorn Foundation's generous support of the police department in this program, we've sent a letter determining if they want to continue their funding support of this program. If they determine that they want to make a donation, acceptance of the grant dollars will appear in the legislation that will come before the commission. But we'd like to request a motion to support, oh, I'm sorry, we will send a letter, to support sending a letter to the Dorn Foundation for the potential funding of the body worn camera project. I apologize.
So I'm sorry, Mr. Whoopsir, are you asking for a motion to approve the letter?
Motion to approve, application to the Dorn Foundation.
Okay.
Sorry, that was a little...
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Objection, the motion be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved.
Thank you. Moving on to the fire department. Firefighters have continued being active in the community, including helping twice a month with Ogo's Mobile Food Pantry and Project Happy, and also assisted with Sandusky Recreation's winter break camp at Sandusky High School, which was very successful. Also, throughout the month of December, firefighters and explorers volunteered at Victory Kitchen as an extension of No Shave November. And on Christmas Eve, the fire department turned into Santa's Workshop with firefighters serving as Santa's elves, putting together toys. Also, Lieutenant Bodel and Community Impact Officer Jeff Danovich provided drone coverage for the Shine on the Shore event, which took place the week before last. For the finance department, the next scheduled finance committee meeting is Friday, February 22 at 8:00 a.m. in the commission chambers for Public Works. They want to congratulate Chris Hamilton for his promotion to plant maintenance one at the wastewater treatment plant, and to welcome Scott Romick, who's joined the staff at Oakland Cemetery as a maintenance two. Also, the unveiling of the MLK bust in Washington Park will be presented by the Pioneer Committee on Monday, January 21 at 3:00 p.m. And to Dennis's earlier point, we want to say thank you to all those who really have worked hard together, both from the Pioneer Committee, from Balcony, to staff from the Public Works Department, to make that possible. It'll be a really wonderful tribute to Dr. King in really one of our most civic spaces at Washington Park. So we hope to see everybody on the 21st at 3:00 p.m. Also, ODOT has awarded $1,285,470 of safety funds to the City of Sandusky for a safety-related improvement project on Hayes Avenue between Orlando Pace Drive and Columbus Avenue. The project will consist of restriping, signal replacements, pedestrian crossings, preemption, and other infrastructure improvements. Construction is currently planned for 2023, which will allow some of the planned construction on that corridor to finish before we come in and do those projects. Also, OPWC has awarded the Thorpe Drive Culvert Replacement Project that includes complete replacement of a large damaged culvert pipe, resurfacing from the culvert to Venice Road, and partial sidewalk replacement. Moving on to community development. On January 2, the city published a annual notice in the register outlining solid waste disposal requirements. Any properties found to have trash, debris, garbage, and other refuse in the public right-of-way or boulevard outside of the permitted time shall be declared a nuisance, and the city may cause said refuse to be immediately removed without further notice. If the city removes the nuisance, the cost of doing so, along with a $100 administrative fee, shall be assessed to the property owner. As a reminder, trash, debris, garbage, and other refuse or recyclables may be placed upon a curb for curbside collection, note earlier than 6:00 p.m. on the evening prior to the scheduled collection of solid waste. And any solid waste or containers which remain after collection shall be removed from said curb no later than 8:00 p.m. on the date of collection. As a reminder, code compliance can be reached at 419-627-5913 for questions or concerns related to code issues. Code compliance strives to return all calls within two business days. For the chip program, Tracy Dennis is requesting a satisfaction of mortgage for her 2005 chip owner occupied rehabilitation program loan. Ms. Dennis received a $22,216 loan in 2005. The current amount owed to the city is $11,108. Ms. Dennis is requesting a payback amount of $8,731, a reduction of $3,169 to her loan. The $8,731 is the amount that will be remaining to pay off the balance of the loan after the property is sold. If the sale of the property does not take place, the bank will continue to foreclose on the property. City staff is recommending approval of the satisfaction to allow the sale to take place so the property does not go into foreclosure. I'd ask for a motion from the commission to consider...
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mr. Kresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Thank you. Moving on to the planning department. Sandusky Transit will be adding Sunday service to the Blue Line, starting on February 3, 2019. This will only be for the Blue Line on the fixed routes. No dial or ride service will be offered on Sunday. Also, Sandusky Transit will be releasing a request for proposals for a new transit advertising partner on January 15 of this year. Completed packets will be due to the planning department no later than 10:00 a.m. on January 29. The regular planning commission meeting is scheduled Wednesday, January 23 at 4:30 p.m. in the first floor conference room. The regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting will be canceled for January, and a landmark commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January 16 at 4:30 p.m., also in the first floor conference room. Moving on to recreation. The Sandusky Recreation Department would like to thank the following businesses and programs for their donations of lunch and time to our New Year, New You, Winter Break Camp at Sandusky High School. And before I do those donations, I just want to commend, I don't believe anyone from the rec department is here tonight, but Tundra, Jason, Annette, and so many volunteers from the police department, fire department, and other parts of the city really did a great job with that event. My own two children were able to attend all three days and just had a really amazing experience and got to know a lot of classmates. And one of the more exciting things was getting to see Sandusky High's new planetarium improvements that they made as part of their transformation or school, Building Better Dreams projects. And so I think that's an indication of just how much new programming and youth-focused programming that we've been able to do by expanding the rec department, and hope to see more of it. It also took a lot of community partners to take that event on, and so we want to thank a few of those tonight, including Lee's Famous Recipe, Berardi's Family Kitchen, and Pizza House East for providing lunch for each of the three days of camp. I know for my own kids, that was really, all really well received. The Sandusky Junior Sailors, Diversity Dan, Sandusky Fire and Police Departments, Diversity Dan, chess players of Huron, Erie, Seneca, and Sandusky Counties, Color Me Pretty with Bridget Sanders, Leslie Griffin with Crooked Canvas, Morgan Johnson and Ogo also donated their time for the three-day camp. And a huge thank you to the Sandusky City Schools for providing space, including the aforementioned Sidney Frohman Planetarium, as well as Colin Irish and the boys' basketball team, who put in a lot of work, and the kids really love that as well. So with that, I conclude my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Whoopsir. That winter break program really was just another great extension of what our rec department is doing, and it's a great collaboration that we're able to enjoy with Sandusky City Schools. So much good going on there. It's almost too much to report sometimes, just a lot of good things going on at a lot of levels. Just really loved Chief, the Santa's Workshop, very clever that firefighters did that. I think that was well received by the community. I wish it had been around a couple of years earlier when I was putting those things together, but it took a little while. I spent a lot, I spent a lot of mornings, it seemed like I got up just as soon as I went to bed, putting together those complicated things, but I'm sure that was much appreciated. And then, Mrs. Whoopsir, just a minor correction on the garbage pickup. A couple of years ago, we modified during the winter hours that you could put your trash out before, no later than 4:00.
Got it.
Earlier than 4:00 p.m. in the winter months, so that we had some concerns that were raised about people. So I did take a quick look at our ordinance, I won't bother citing the statute or the ordinance, but we did modify that, so some folks would take it out before it got out.
Thank you for catching it, I apologize that I did not. Actually, as I was reading it, it was like, that seems later than what we've been doing, or, yeah, later than what we'd been doing, so I appreciate it.
I get the advantage of being able to second-guess you, because you're still talking, and I'm reticent, so. But it worked out okay.
Thanks.
So questions or comments for the city manager? If not, then we will turn to old business. Anyone have any items of old business?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
Just something for Mr. Heyberger. As we're looking through and maybe looking at the competitive bid process, you might want to take a look at what we just finished with Arts Commission, because there was some misunderstanding as to if we have artists on the Arts Commission, can they bid out a project? And I believe there to the understanding that if they do bid a project, then they just can't vote for, obviously, to select themselves, and that is a huge potential for savings for our public arts program. So maybe just take a look at that as well.
Okay. Any other items of old business? Any items of new business? I have just one. I need to schedule a public, I've been requested to schedule a public hearing for an amendment to Chapter 1161 Landmark Preservation for February 25. Is that something I need a vote for, Mrs. Kresser, or, okay, there's, so I would request a motion for approval to set a public hearing for an amendment to Chapter 1161 to the landmark preservation.
February 25.
On February 25.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries, and the hearing is set.
Aye.
Any other items of new business? We'll turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any items of city business, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. And while we're walking up there, I just want to say that I appreciate Stuart, your effort, and Mr. Klein, your effort, putting together some ability to monitor what's going on with the trains on the west side of the city. That's so terribly important to our members, our residents, I should say, on that part of the state, and Senator Brown's, let's stop, city, excuse me, Senator Brown's, I was thinking about Senator Brown next to you. Senator Brown's office reached out and put us in touch with some folks in Columbus who are looking at some similar issues and have additional resources to bear, and I just want to let everyone know that his office has immediately responded, because I saw the article in the register, and I'm looking forward to their help, and we'll see where all that goes. Ms. Carter, please.
Carter, 5309 Columbus Avenue. Columbus Avenue. Just have a bunch of little things. Mr. Poole was talking about the water lines and what you pay for on your electric bill or gas bill. They all have something like that, and we ran into a situation where an aunt had one of the companies doing the water line, electric line, the gas line, and when she had problems with it just because of low pressure, they wouldn't cover it. If it would have burst, they would have covered it. If it would have failed, they would have covered it, but just for low pressure, they would not cover it. She had to pay for herself. And then when we were going to pave the driveway, the gas line had to be moved for that to the other side of the house, they wouldn't pay for that either, so. Just, I guess it's your house, I don't know. The Hogreef property with the college being built next to it, that building always has sun on it every morning, and my concern, I can't tell what footprint this building's going to take. If there's going to be enough room between the two buildings, how their cars are going to get back to their parking spaces in the back, if it's going to leave enough air circulation, because now you're taking all the sun down to maybe 45 minutes to an hour a day, and I'm concerned, they put a lot of money into that building, they made it gorgeous, and there's freezing and thawing and freezing in the brick that would be a concern on that side of that building now, when it's going to be shaded by a six-story building, five-story building. And those people just lost all their view. Now, the people in the building might have a nice view in their bedrooms, in the kitchen, in the bathroom, but... Ms. Hogreef has a business that has paddle boats and kayaks, and the city opened up a hole in the stone to get the kayaks down to the water. Is the city going to close that hole up for the winter? Because when that lake freezes, you know some ding-dong's going to go down there and try to get on that water, because now it's easier to access instead of falling over one of those boulders. So I just, I saw that the other day, and I saw it hadn't been closed up or secured somehow, so that somebody doesn't do that. Again, today was a sad day for some people, because the construction starts on Jackson Street Pier. There's been sniping in the newspaper, and Mr. Murray stated at the, on the 22nd, that this has been a large controversy, and it will be. There's people that are upset about it, people are looking forward to it, people that are just waiting to see what's going to happen, and I just hope that it doesn't get too nasty. It wasn't a teeny tiny bit of people that are whining about it, it was a lot of people. We heard from people from all over the state that came up here and said, you're going to do what? So there's a lot of people concerned, and we're just looking forward to seeing what happens and how it turns out. If you, there was a lot of people out there Sunday, and you can see already from the fencing that's been put up, that it does cut off the line of sight across, so that's why we didn't want a railing there. It already feels closed in, and we know that's a security issue for construction. It'll be gone when it's done. But we're just looking forward to it, and some people are sad, and some people are happy about it, and it will always be a line of contention, so we're just going to look forward to the next project, so we're looking forward at Battery Park. Let's see what happens on Battery Park. I know Mr. Whoopsir will be looking forward to hearing us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Kim Oberhart, 618 Sycamore Line, and my questions actually have to do with Jackson Street Pier also. I know that when the funding went through for Jackson Street Pier, part of that funding was $2 million of private funds, and I was just wondering if the public could have an update on the $2 million, if that was obtained or not, and have any contracts been signed with the Islander and Jema, and Jaman? And then lastly, if the $2 million has not been obtained, when are we going to look at changes in the plan?
We can talk to that at a future meeting.
Okay. Mr. Whoopsir, still collecting information in answer to your question, we'll address it in a future meeting, what he's indicated. Okay.
Greetings, everyone. Tom Lamarcas, 20648 Street. Old business for sure. I'm concerned about the building that's going up next to Hogreef's redevelopment project at, and I think it's 246, is the address that they've got the easement for, utility-wise, but a five or six-story structure right up against a gentleman's building that he just invested over $3 million on is really kind of a slap in the face. It'd be kind of akin to building, a building in front of the Murray Building on the, on the bayside and blocking that beautiful view that you have. You've got some other locations, and I don't quite understand why you didn't choose the lot that's on East Market and Franklin, or the former Sandusky Cabinet site. Both of those, I mean, you're still extending the footprint of the development of downtown by putting that building there. Plus, if you were to go to the Sandusky Cabinet site, then that allows for expansion. If this college really grows and takes a hold, now you've got room to expand that. Unless you've already got something planned for that site, to me, it doesn't make sense to jam this building onto that corner. Another option might be the Keller Building land site that, you know, was going to be overpriced condos that have disappeared now, and that's all quiet. So why not, kind of, before you start letting them spend money on that site, let's take a little breather and move it. Put it, put it just outside of that area and preserve the parking lot, because we're going to really need some parking downtown. When all of these apartments get filled and occupied, and the storefronts that Hogreef's working on become occupied, and you've got people coming downtown, they've got to be able to park somewhere. I know there's a gentleman in the area that thinks that people are not going to have cars in the future, but trust me, if we're going to have cars for a long time, we're going to have a parking problem. So building, the college as planned, I think it's a detrimental effect and simply wrong. It's the wrong location. Great idea, love it, I love all the developments going on downtown, but please move the college a little bit to the east. And then I just want to touch on that Brady sign deal. I think you've opened up a can of worms where the lowest bidder can set up his buddy, who's And then I just want to touch on that Brady sign deal. I think you've opened up a can of worms where the lowest bidder can set up his buddy, who's the next highest bidder, to, to get a job, be it a road project, a water line project, what have you. The guy comes in and bids, pick a number, $100,000, whoa, and you award the contract, and second highest bid is $100,000 higher, and the first guy says, you know what, I made a couple mistakes and errors in math and I've got to withdraw, and you let him out. So think about that, but please move the college. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Lamarcas. If what occurred, if, if what you suggested had occurred, that would be a state and federal crime, so I'm sure that did not happen, but I understand the pause that you are suggesting.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. I wasn't here at the last city commission meeting, I would like to make some statements on this competitive bidding thing. Mister Brady is liaison to the engineering department. That, to me, looks a little inappropriate. That's where all the bids come in, in that department. Plus, that bid was 50%, 50% lower than the other guy. If I was the other guy in Maslin there, I'd be asking some hard questions, what's going on here? And you're all beating the bush or going around the bush here on this, whether or not it's ethical or not. If it's not, if it's ethical for him, Mister Brady, to do this, then let him bid it. But if it's not, if it's been ruled it's not, then we need to know about this because there's others in line here that are doing the same thing. The charter makes.
Mister Brady did address that last question that you addressed, you made, or asked, I should say, and the Ethics Committee, Commission did clear him to, to bid on that project.
But then Mister Heyberger also said, the charter said, you cannot have an interest in a contract, direct or indirect.
You were asking two different questions, so I was.
It's very confusing.
It is confusing, but I was addressing the particular question that you've raised about the ethics.
Well, I'm just bringing, I'm just putting some things out there that maybe, I don't know if you reelect liaisons at the beginning of the year or every two years or one, but you need to look at that kind of thing, where commissioners are serving on a department there where they can have some influence or whatever. I'm not saying that he does, but.
I understand.
You know, when, if I had a sign company, I would think, oh, look at this now. We got a commissioner who's liaisoned to the engineering department, and I'm trying to bid on a contract, and there's 50% difference. Nobody has told us why there's a 50% difference, okay? No one. I would like to know why there's that much difference.
Well, it's been explained. Mister Brady bid on this low as a matter of pride, and it was below his cost. We had one other bid, it was competitively bid, and, and I can assure you that Mister Heyberger and Mister Klein make certain that when there is a bid, that Mister Brady is involved in, that he has nothing to do with that. Formulating the bid, putting it out for bid, he receives the bid like any other bid, any other contractor who wants to bid, and he bid, so.
If I were the Maslin guy, I'd have a problem with that. I would have some very big issues. There's three red flags on that, I'm sorry, but that's how I look at it. As far as the demos and running out of money for the demos, if you guys quit giving away the grant money, you would have enough money to take every one of these condemned houses down. So don't give me an excuse that you're running out of money to take demos down when you're giving hand over fist money away in grants. That's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Johnson. Anyone else?
Chairman.
Mister Poole.
Just for clarity, in listening to this, if the Ethics Commission ruled that Mister Brady could bid on the contract, then our law director's interpretation that he couldn't must be wrong. I'm not, I'm willing to accept what you want. We need to decide, I need to know which one we're going to use going forward.
There were two.
He indicated that, that, that we couldn't give him the, which would indicate he couldn't bid. I don't know. Through saying he could bid, okay, you say it's like.
Mister Heyberger, yeah.
Through you, Commissioner President, to Commissioner Poole, there's two separate issues here.